Good morning, this is Knox County Commissioners, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. We will be opening up with the Opportunity Knox Service Snapshot Report from Brandy. Scott, thank you for being here and it, once again, welcome and if you'll say your name for those people who are watching now or will watch later on, they'll know exactly who you are.
Thank you, Bill Berry, I'm Scott Boone, I'm Knox County Job and Family Services Director.
I'm Brandy Booth, I am the Ohio Mean Jobs Knox County Job Center Administrator.
And I know we brought Brandy recently to talk about net and some other things. Today, knowing that you're under a time crunch a bit, wanted to give, ask her to give an overview of Ohio Mean Jobs Knox County and all the things that we do at Opportunity Knox best she can within that timeframe. And also extend an invitation to all of you to come out and visit the building and see all the wonderful cosmetic improvements that are entered.
Roof looks nice.
Yeah, it looks gorgeous and the floor and the furniture and all those things, it's like a brand new building. So, thank you again for all that and then I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. So, I know Bill's familiar with with our work, but Barry, I'm not sure how familiar you are with the the public workforce system. So, I just want to give you an overview of what we are. We're a comprehensive one-stop job center. We operate under the Greater Ohio Workforce Board and so we are the public workforce system. We have multiple MOU agreements with partners, which we have, we get new MOU agreements, reciprocal agreements, and some of our partners pay their fair share of our utility costs because they occupy space in our building. We have four state staff offices that are staffed. And then our staff, we have fourteen, I have fourteen staff members, I currently have two vacancies. We operate multiple programs, so I just kind of want to give you an overview of our programs. We provide one-stop general job seeker services, that's resume job seeking, career counseling. We help with applications, mock interviews, job readiness, we also help with unemployment assistance. So, when somebody's on unemployment and they need help getting their application filed, they can come in and we have staff that can help them file it. We cannot access unemployment records or process anything for them, but we can help them get their 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 application filed. We also provide the one-stop general business services to all of our local businesses. We do job postings, job ads, to help develop physician descriptions, we can do screening for them, assessments on the job training, income at worker training, and then connections to state initiatives like the tech cred or the work opportunity tax credit. We operate the WEOWA programming, so we do training and career services under the WEOWA Adult and Dislocated Workers.
Do you want to define the initials?
So, yes, I'm sorry, workforce innovation and opportunity act, so that's, yeah, that's WEOWA. The the adult dislocated worker, adult, we can provide basic career services and then we also use some of our funding for training dollars for individuals that qualify. We have the comprehensive case management and employment program, we operate that out of Opportunity Knox as well, that's a youth program for youth ages fourteen to twenty-four. We, there are fourteen elements to that, the biggest ones that we provide here in this county are GED programming for youth, credit recovery, we do a lot of career exploration, career readiness, paid work experiences. So, we're getting ready to do a great big event here on October first over at the Field House. We are expecting twelve to thirteen hundred youth to come through that that day. We already.
Our county schools.
That is, it's all county schools, but it is also open to youth ages fourteen to twenty-four, so they can register to come as well. We currently have thirty-seven businesses registered, we are anticipating having over fifty this year. So, a lot of exciting stuff going on with that.
What was the date on that?
October first.
Okay.
October first. So, we also do the summer youth employment programming, our classroom is full this year. We do credit recovery for high school students that need to recover credits to graduate on time. We are also operating a summer employment program and I believe they were down here last week and they did a tour. We filled that program up this year as well, so that's been a huge success for us. We operate the reemployment services and eligibility assessment, known as the RESEA program. That is a, an extension of unemployment, so we do the selections for the state. Our staff does the assessments, works with these folks that are the most, it's predicted that they will run out of unemployment benefits before they gain employment. So, we're working with them early on to help them through that process. We operate the prevention retention contingency program, that's the PRC. We help folks, previously, when we were doing the PRC program, we did work supports. Now, we also help with the housing assistance, utilities, so transportation. And we do work supports like uniforms and work boots and things like that, so they qualify for that.
The average age of the people who are using this, you know, I'd be exact, is there a ballpark that fits this age?
So, I would say in our jobs resource room, our average age is probably over fifty.
Really?
Because they're not as tech savvy and they need help with that. So, they, we, I would say over fifty is generally in our jobs resource room. In our youth programs, our average age is seventeen to twenty, so.
And the funding is all grant funded?
It is all federally funded through the workforce, through the Department of Labor, all of that's federally funded.
And maybe you'll get to this, but on your your snapshot sheet, I notice you have SNAP and OWF hours worked. So, are people required then to have work hours and that's what you're tracking on those?
They are, that was my next, that was my next item. So, we do the work requirements for Ohio Works First and the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. So, folks that are receiving benefits and have been determined to be work eligible, they are required to do a certain number of hours, to work a certain number of hours. We get those referrals over, we do those assessments and we determine those appropriate assignments and we track those hours. There's been a lot of changes to that program over the last year. So, the SNAP education and training has gone from a required program to involuntary program. So, they can volunteer to do the hours. That may sound bad on the front side of it, but on the backside of it, if they don't volunteer to do the hours after three months, their benefits close and they can't get them back for three years. So, it's, they are enforcing the three of thirty-six months. You can get SNAP benefits for three months. After the three months, if you are not working for them, then you can't get them back for three years, so.
Well, I know a lot of people, general public, that don't know much about SNAP program, just think, well, they're on this for life and they don't have to do anything. So, they, so SNAP does have requirements that in order for them to get their benefits, they had to, if they're healthy-wise, the public do that. So, can, did you have programs that they can go volunteer to do work, to get those hours in or how's that done?
So, we do, we can do WEP agreements, Work Experience Program agreements with nonprofits. So, you cannot do WEP agreements with for-profit businesses, it has to be nonprofit. We don't do as much of that now because we have the whole workshop, we have a whole system right on our on our property that we do a lot of that stuff with. So, if if we would find it to be inappropriate, then yes, we would look for an external. But we don't have an overwhelmingly large number of people and I know that that's contrary to popular belief. The majority of the people who are receiving SNAP benefits are working. So, they are working with people who are just not making enough money to make ends meet. So, that's the majority of the people who are receiving SNAP benefits.
Yes.
The Ohio Works First, and we've talked about this before, when I started in work activities back in two thousand thirteen, we had probably two to three hundred cases, families receiving cash assistance benefits. We're down to less than twenty. Yes, so there are not massive amounts of people that are receiving these benefits. We also do jobs programming and that is, we have a worker that works specifically with the justice system and the recovery population, working with those folks, helping to get them into employment. You know about the net program, we've talked about the non-emergent transportation. We are going to be getting childcare eligibility is coming back to workforce on September first. So, we will also be doing childcare eligibility. And then we also operate the workshop and recycling center. So, all of that happens at Opportunity Knox under the umbrella, so that's a whole lot of stuff that we do.
So, we're back to the debt, was it Tuesday, Jason, we signed a contract at seven hundred thousand? Was the max that we could do? I mean, who comes up with that seven hundred thousand figure on the net, do you know, Scott?
I do not do any of the budgeting for that, so I I cannot answer that for you.
I mean, we were, we were hopeful that we could get up to seven hundred dollars for that, to be able to, you know.
I'm not exactly sure, I think it's, it might be a braded between federal and state money, but I can find out and.
I just curious that, because that numbers, you have, what, three times more than what I think you've ever seen.
Right.
Okay, just curious.
I'll let you know.
Yeah. So, the overview, I tried to do a one-page, I tried to make it as easy as possible to kind of follow. We had seventy, over seventy-two hundred visits to our job center last year. Three hundred and five were first-time visitors. We provided, our staff provided five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five individual services to to folks coming in. Some of our biggest services were almost twenty-five percent of the services we provided were assistance with unemployment benefits. And then another twenty-five percent were workshop attendance, so we operate workshops and folks can come in for those. We did twenty-two percent of our services were resume writing services. And then also we did several assessments, many, many assessments, about twenty percent of our services were assessments that we did for employers and also for job seekers. Business services, we've provided over thirteen hundred individual business services to our local employers. We posted eight hundred and eight jobs and we forwarded one thousand seventy-seven applications to. We used some of our funding for income at worker training. We spent eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars on offsetting costs to employers for training. So, we we paid a portion of their employees' training. We had leased a platform, a training platform that had a lot, had thirty-five seats and a lot of different pathways and we opened that up to employers to sign their employees up, so, and we did fill almost all of those seats. So, a lot of training going on. One of the things I want to point out with this eleven thousand dollars that we spent, we trained up two paramedics and fire chief for the Central Ohio Joint Fire District. A few years ago, they couldn't get staff in, they had EMTs, they didn't have qualified staff and they have told us that our helping them offset those costs has helped with their employer retention and so it it benefited their whole entire community. So, these are good programs that benefit a lot of people. Our youth impact, we served seventy-four youth last year, six earned their GED with us. We did twenty-five kids earned high school credits to be able to graduate on time and we had twelve hundred attend our class last year. Our summer program last year, we had one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight hours were worked, the youth worked. They completed seven hundred and eighty-two job readiness hours and forty-one certifications were earned for the for those.
How many employees do you have out there doing all this, do you know?
We have fourteen employees.
Wow, sounds like a lot.
It is, it is, it really is a lot of of work and I know. So, when I say we're going to do something else, everybody's praising, like, we're going to do another program.
So, the forty-one certifications, what's that mean?
So, they, these are our youth that got their first aid, CPR and person in charge certifications for the for the food service.
So, person in charge, I, you say, you connect that to the food service?
That that is, that's part of the food service. So, there are two certifications for food service and that is the lesser one, that takes a little bit less time to get, but that will help them go into food service jobs. So, these are fourteen to seventeen-year-olds.
Okay.
So.
So, person, child that's fourteen can actually work in the food service industry?
Yes.
Yeah, they get a work permit for that?
Yes, yeah, anybody under eighteen has to have a work permit.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, lots of stuff that we've done. I did want to talk about some upcoming changes that are coming to workforce, in case you are not aware. The public workforce system is about to change and it's about to change radically. So, we don't know what that's going to look like, an executive order was given by the White House on April twenty-third. They have ninety days, the Department of Labor, Department of Education, Department of Commerce had ninety days. So, next week, they have to give their recommendations to President Trump on what they think needs to happen with the public workforce system. So, we're just waiting, we're just waiting to see what's going to happen. I can tell you this, and this next piece has nothing to do with that executive order, has nothing to do with any cuts that Doge made. We are facing some significant funding cuts for this next program year. We got our our spreadsheet with what our allocations are going to be, we're taking a sixty-nine percent cut in adult funding. We're taking a thirteen percent cut in dislocated worker funding and we're going to take a fifty-two percent cut in youth funding. So, for that in perspective, we were expecting a hundred thousand dollars in adult funding and we're getting thirty-four thousand. So, we were expecting a hundred and sixty thousand in youth funding and we're getting seventy-seven thousand. So, we are going to really have to get creative with how we're providing services and we're going to have to say no. So, there are going to be times that we're going to have to say no because we just don't have the funding. Unless the executive order comes about and they get everything approved through the Senate and through the House and it's signed and they scrap what's going to happen on October first. So, this funding is October first. If they end up scrapping the whole program and starting over and doing something different, this could all change. If they don't get that through, this is going to go into effect and it's going to really affect the level of service that we could provide. So, I do have the methodology on that because when I saw the numbers, I panicked a little bit. I think we all kind of were like, what is happening, this can't be right. So, we questioned the state on it, they gave us the methodology, it is surrounding. So, they they set a excess unemployment rate of four and a half percent. Counties that are above that get more funding, counties that are below that get less funding. They also take into consideration the poverty levels in the areas and the labor participation and as well as war notices that go out, so.
We're just over four percent, I count, correct?
So, we've been hovering right below four percent, so, I mean, it will tip over.
Four point four.
Yeah, it'll tip over a little bit and then it'll go below, so, yeah.
So, it doesn't matter when they look at it, but it counts?
So, I believe, if you look at the methodology, they go back and they pull labor market information from the last twelve months.
Because you can argue that you're proactively.
Yeah.
Offering things to keep the unemployment down, so then if you take those away, then do we go above four and a half percent?
Yes.
And now you're funding in a different way through unemployment benefits.
Right.
So, it it's kind of one of those catch twenty-two. It's, you do a really good job and then we're going to punish you for it. Do a really good job in the employment area and then we're going to take all of your funding because other areas need it, so.
It's been frustrating because since Brandy's been in this position since COVID, she's built a lot of relationships with community employers that we never had before, people that didn't know we existed or thought we did a certain thing, but oh, now it's it's all this. And they come to us, just like the the fire department and, you know, we've helped them build a succession plan now. And we want to keep that momentum going and now we're at a point where it's like, we'll help you to this degree, we'll help as much as we can, but we can't, we don't want to overpromise and underdeliver on something when we don't know what funding's coming behind, what we want to do, what we're used to doing for you.
So, we'll take a look at it again next summer. If if the WEOWA program stays as it is, you know, we'll get another notification next summer as to what the allocation's going to be and hopefully we're going to see an increase. But it's going to be tight for the next year, it's going to be really, really tight in the in the job side of things.
Yeah, so when you say next year, you talk, you talked about in October, figured out stuff. So, next year is this two thousand twenty-six, seventeen, where are you through December?
It is not, so the program years, and this is crazy, the program years are July first through June thirtieth. The fiscal year is October first through September thirtieth, so.
State year for July, June and the federal.
Yes, yes, though, and I have a spreadsheet that tells me all this because I, it's hard to keep track of it. So, the funding, the funding that I'm talking about right now that we're taking the cut on is funding that the postal last June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-seven. So, but if we get another allocation next summer, that will have to last till two thousand twenty-eight, but we'll have it available to use.
Yeah, so it's a simple formula for you to use.
Yeah, it's it's not simple at all, but I did bring the methodology, if you are interested in that, I would like to get that with you. Okay, you can have that, that's the methodology that they use to determine what we were going to get, so.
It been, thank you for for all the information. I know on your your PRC, again, refresh my memory as to what PRC is.
Prevention Retention Contingency.
That program, you work with the courts?
So, I mean, we'll work with anybody, but that is, that was what we funded through Nahoko previously. We pulled that back in-house and so we're doing that program. We saw two hundred and sixty-one applications last year and we were able to approve two hundred and twenty-one of them. So, we are helping a lot of people and the biggest request that we are getting is housing, so requests for housing assistance.
And Bill, if if you care to to post the snapshot on your page later, there is, Brandy did create a key at the bottom to explain some of these. I was the same way, I missed it myself. Anybody, you know, that's watching now and wants to go back and re-watch it, some of those acronyms that we've been talking about, Brandy's been talking about or.
Swell now, I guess, to post that, Scott, on County Social.
Yeah, I I think. Yeah, I think the more we can push out there, the better.
Yeah, Andrew.
I have a better one.
So, the Justice Service and Recovery Individual Service, what the Justice Service and Recovery Individuals Service, who are those people?
So, those are people who are part of the Merritt Court, part of the Armour Court. We get referrals just from probation department. So, we have a worker that that provides programming right across the street at the probation house. So, she goes there twice a week and does programming, those folks.
So, you know, some of the language people use as a navigator, is that a kind of a navigator-type system or?
I mean, I don't know that we've ever really given it a name, we call all of our folks Employment Service Specialists.
Navigator is probably more related to the child support work that we're doing with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, because I know they've talked about with the judges and the probation officers and we've even with the veterans talked about having a navigator to help individuals that are involved with tough situations to be able to know who to go to to get certain things accomplished. And it it sounds like some of this may be part of what you guys do.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of community partners, so we would probably pull in the navigator at United Way if we're looking for services to help with those folks. We primarily focus on employment, is that that what we do, that's what we're good at doing. And so, when we're out providing those services, if they, if they need help applying for food assistance, yeah, I mean, that's us, we can help you with that. But if they're looking for something that we don't provide, we would maybe help them find some, somebody that can help them with that, so.
Brandy and Scott, we really appreciate.
Thank you so much.
You guys do, thank you for coming in. Yeah, then you're going to send a digital copy to Andrew.
You know, I'll talk to Jason about maybe getting you guys up the road some point when.
I'll be there Wednesday because I have a work to have.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we would love to give you a tour of the facility and kind of see everything that happens, the workshop, everything that.
Yeah, I'd like to come up too.
So, yeah, and actually even the facility behind too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's shot, that's shot, so you're welcome anytime, obviously, but if you want to coordinate it, make sure Brandy and Ordain are there. We'll set it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Did you have a Brian is here with this happen, come in?
Yes.
After his, he doesn't take too long.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Awesome.
And next, he gave us a May and a June's report.
Yeah, so it must have came up and rescheduled. Fancy seeing you. The dog's still available.
Well, you said not till Friday, right?
Yeah, so it's, nobody has claimed it yet, so.
Well, so I have a question for you.
Well, just so everyone knows, Brian Digger's staff are dog wardens here and Commissioner Lester went out to do a visit and checked on dogs, so you can ask your question.
Can I bring our other dog out to the room and make sure they don't?
Yeah, absolutely, that's, yeah, that's one of our balls, basically.
We want to make sure they get hello, welcome home.
Yeah. Yeah, don't want, don't want that to happen.
But you might, you might want to tell people what you're talking about.
Oh, I.
The vocal part of the family and the president of the Lester family had decided that our one dog is lonely and needs a friend. So, she has sent me on the mission, find a friend. Yeah, we like to rescue or adopt dogs instead of going to breeders, so all the dogs and cats have come from rescue. So, I went out and visited and lo and behold, there it was.
All of them, I would, you know, you really want to.
So, you're you're just going to schedule a visit?
Yeah, we're going to do a conjugal visit, so I'm doing.
No, let's not get too risky there, Barry. This, this is a G P I. All right, we've lost control.
Yeah, that's okay. So, the monthly report for the shelter for May two thousand twenty-five, we had a total of twenty-seven dogs enter the shelter. Sixteen of those were owner surrenders, nine were strays, two were seized slash custody dogs. Then we had a total of nineteen dogs leave the shelter, eight were adoptions, five were euthanases, four were returned to owner and two were transferred to rescues. It should be noted that two of the five dogs euthanized in May were at the owner's request to the dogs, to to the dogs being aggressive, having a bite history or for medical reasons. One of the dogs, the shelter euthanized, was unfortunately dying because it was attacked by another dog, so we had to humanely euthanize it. Two other dogs were euthanized for being dog aggressive. A total of nineteen citations were issued in the month of May. Deputy Wiser issued two citations for failure to confine and one citation for failure to license and Deputy Moore issued two citations for failure to confine, six citations for failure to license, five citations for animal cruelty and one citation for failure to register a danger stall. And I issued two citations for failure to confine. So, that is the report for May. And then the monthly report for June two thousand twenty-five, we had twenty-nine dogs enter the shelter. Six were under surrenders, eighteen were strays and five were seized slash custody dogs. And we had a total of thirty dogs leave the shelter in June, seven of those were adoptions, two were euthanases and twenty-one were returned to their owners. It should be noted that the one of the two dogs euthanized in June was at the owner's request to the dog being, to the dog being aggressive and having a bite history and the other dog unfortunately was euthanized because it had been that tech, that tech. And the other dog unfortunately was euthanized because it had been uh, that tech, that tech during an evaluation, so. As of Wednesday, July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, there were a total of twenty-two dogs at the shelter. Nineteen of those are available for adoption. One is currently on hold as evidence for an animal neglect court case. One is adopted and waiting to be picked up by its new owner and one was waiting to be picked up by rescue.
And one waiting for Barry. The dog's ear got tore by a wreck.
Yeah, uh, it's okay, it's, it'll be fine. Out of the twenty-two dogs at the shelter, ten of those are owner surrenders, nine are stray dogs. And two were seized from their owners because of animal neglect and one was abandoned by its owner. There are a total of nine dogs on the adoption floor that have been there for over sixty days. And a total of twenty citations were issued in the month of June. Uh, Deputy Wiser issued two citations for failure to confine, Deputy Moore issued eight citations for failure to confine. Uh, four citations for failure to license and one citation for animal cruelty. And three citations for animal neglect. Uh, Deputy Brown issued one citation for failure to confine and I issued a citation for failure to confine, so.
So on the, uh, every time, it seems like uh, you always have a list of those that you picked up that were stray dogs. Are the vast majority of those, uh, you find the owners for?
A good majority of them are returned to their owners. Yeah, there's always a handful that the owners don't come and claim that we have to adopt out, so.
So these dogs, uh, that don't have collars on them at all?
Um, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. I would say most of the time they have collar. But no identification, no license, not microjet. We'll make sure he signs the waiver.
He is cute as a button. I mean, I don't know exactly what he is, but he's hairy and I.
Uh, we're calling him Disco. He's not available till tomorrow morning, so.
We'll have Stanley and Earl.
Yeah, the dog's name's Stanley. Well, hopefully that visit will go well.
Yeah, I hope so. But if you have two, you might as well have three.
Well, thank you, Brian.
Let me get buried at his speech.
Yeah, Barry is going to be at Leadership Knox from here.
Leadership Knox, that was the memorial building. So we have the approved of post-closure care at the landfill. This is for the second half of twenty-five. This is with Bennett Williams Environmental Consultants. Ongoing, we do this routinely. This is the second half, so the estimated cost is thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. And second, those favor say I.
Then we have a proven agreement with DLZ Ohio Inc. For annual inspections for a portion of the county bridges. There's twelve bridges. Uh, in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion to approve. Second, those favor say I.
And then we have approved a contractor application for payment. Number one, this is to Smalls Asphalt Paving for the annual resurfacing project. And this is for two hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and four dollars and eighty-nine cents. This will go through, it's two, it's a little over two million in total, but this is the first payment, so.
And second, those favor say I.
And then we have approved a bid award for the county engineer for uh. OPW C Michigan Road Resurfacing and to Smalls for seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. One hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-five cents, which was approximately fifty thousand dollars under the engineer's estimate.
Motion to approve. Second, those favor say I.
And then we have an agreement for pooled local funds. And this is related to the Knox County Family and Children First Council. This relates to the. Uh, Knox County Department of Job and Family Services, Knox County Board of DD. The Mental Health and Recovery Board for Knox and Lipton County and the Knox County Juvenile Court. Total is sixty thousand dollars. Each of those will pool fifteen thousand dollars.
Second, to lose favor say I.
And then the last is a, a quote for document destruction for Knox County. Job Family Services and this is just per gene of records that are, yeah, past their time. And this is ready to go for nine thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion to approve. Second, those favor stay active.
And that is all, which is.
Barry, we're gonna get you there on film.
Yeah, I need a ride over there.
I need to sign all these documents.
And then we have Barry, you were at the um, um, fairgrounds last night.
I was.
The board and.
There was. A hog barn is. Gonna be ready to use the offices, will be done for the fair. Uh, there was some actual. Issues, uh, but the hog barn looks good. And uh, will be operational. Menders are moving in. Uh, they did increase their two gender population by ten this year, which was in the year.
And that's, that's a good thing. And then I went down to um, your township last night for the push-in for the. The fire engine, new fire engine. It's seventeen tons that I, we had to have the engine help a little bit on pushing it in. Cause uh, we weren't strong enough to do all that. See, I don't, we need to sign that. Um, so I'll take a motion.
And I guess before we go, just to also remind that we won't be meeting in session next week. It's fair week. Masters will be at the fair and so we'll be doing bills, signing bills Tuesdays, Tuesday and Thursday, but we will not have. Tell us our sessions next week.
Uh, so I'm on out to the fair. Yes, Knox County Fair starts Saturday.
Sunday, uh, Sunday.
But people bring in their stuff on Saturday. Yeah, so, yeah, so uh, everyone join us at the Knox County Fair. We as standard juror.